Good afternoon. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. At this time, I'd like to call the January 12th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting to order. May I ask everyone to stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
Our plan for allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do any members have any conflicts of interest or disqualifications with respect to any of the items on the agenda tonight? Hearing none. We have a forum with four people. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Hearing none. We'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
I am sorry, Mr. Chairman. I am gonna make a motion. I guess I can make it here-
Sure.
-to go ahead and to put on the agenda that we will be selecting officers at our next meeting, at our February meeting. I don't know if that's appropriate to put that, to make a motion now, but-
I believe so.
Okay. So I am making a motion to elect officers at our February meeting.
And also approve tonight's?
And approve tonight's agenda.
All right, that works.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved and we'll choose officers at the next meeting. All right. Are there any changes to the December 8th meeting minutes? Hearing none will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as presented.
So move second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Non-meetings, the minutes from the December 8th, 2020 meeting are approved. All right, moving on to new business. First item is PB 2019, Bissel Professional Group. Request for amendment to the Currituck County Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Two, Administration, Section 248D, Minor Subdivision, Chapter Six, Subdivision and Infrastructure Standards, Section 621, Street Standards, and Section 623, Utility Standards, to simplify the approval process, design standards, and defer infrastructure installation for non-residential subdivisions containing four or fewer lots. All right, and Ms. Valova?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if you remember last month, the December 8th meeting, the text amendment for Bissel Professional Group was tabled in order to allow staff time to work with the applicant and address our concerns. We did do that. We feel like that what the applicant has agreed to in the form of the modifications addresses the 2019 Minor Subdivision Text Amendment that was adopted by the board specifically for minor subdivisions. It puts this request in line with that. And the request before you tonight, I've underlined specifically those changes on the screen. So the non-residential minor subdivisions, the applicant has changed that from four lots to three lots. That's in line with the 2019 text amendment. It will apply to properties that have frontage on an existing NC DOT public street, and the property would be zone general business and intended for non-residential development. Providing the frontage on an NC DOT public street will address our lot definitions and lot frontage requirements. It puts that right-of-way requirement and the necessary language in place for that. The parent parcel date would be reset to the effective date of the ordinance, the adoption of the amendment. Driveways, whether they be shared or individual, would be constructed in easements instead of road construction that we typically see in a road right-of-way. The individual lot stormwater design would be handled through the minor subdivision or major subdivision site plan process, and they would meet the site plan standards instead of the subdivision design standards. Individual water and sewer would be provided. In the actual amendment that you have before you, it states prior to the initiation of the use instead of before the subdivision and/or building permit is approved. It requires a general development plan, and it requires the recording of a maintenance agreement, and that was added in to address maintenance of common infrastructure, and we feel like that that addresses those elements that were presented to you at the December 8th meeting. There are two items that we are requesting modification to their application, and that addresses concerns related to the timing of developmental fees. The general statutes identify when counties or governmental entities can require that to be paid, and that has to be paid at the time of building permit that authorizes the construction. So we're asking that anywhere the language includes prior to the initiation of the use on the first subdivision lot, or prior to the initiation of the use on each subdivision lot, that that be replaced with at the time of issuance of the building permit authorizing the construction to begin, and that would be consistent with state law at that point. The second modification that we are recommending is that all the utilities and the common drive aisle be extended to the adjoining property, and we're asking that that be done at the time of building permit issuance, where also, excuse me, the easements would be done at the time of building permit issuance. During construction, they would extend the utilities to the abutting property line, and that common drive would be extended to the property line. What we're hoping to do in that instance is help aid with an established lot that someone's coming in and making the connection, that they're not tearing up any portion of the adjoining's property, they're just connecting up to it, and they're not having construction activities on an established lot. And also, in the event that during construction, if construction's occurring, we talked briefly about this during the work session, if you have parcel A, and construction's occurring on parcel A, that those easements are put in place for construction of parcel B or C at that point. So we feel like with the addition of those two modifications, that it's in line with the land use plan, the ordinance, and at that point, we can recommend approval of this request, because we feel like it is consistent with the ordinance, county code of ordinance, and although specifically, there's no direct correlation with the request and any of the policies, objectives, or goals in the plan, we do feel like it will be consistent with policy CD4, where it suggests that highway-oriented commercial uses would be clustered along segments of the highway, and they would be mutually compatible, and it reinforces the use and design, and it has a way of minimizing signage access points and prevents the unsightly dysfunctional strip development, because there will be a plan in place that would guide that development. We also feel that this request as amended would be reasonable in the public interest, because it is a result in a logical and orderly development pattern, because a new development would require a general development plan, and it would address the infrastructure improvements and maintenance responsibilities for any of the common elements that are part of the development. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this application.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do have a question. I want to make sure I'm reading this right. On our handout for the brief description of the agenda items, it said contain four or fewer lots, but-
It's three.
It's three, okay, okay, because on the overhead, it said three.
That was probably a carryover from the last meeting agenda, but it is definitely three.
All right.
And I still have in this presentation the elements and slides that were presented to the board at the December 8th meeting, so if you need to see those, either myself or the applicant can pull those up.
Everybody good? I think we're good. Thank you. All right, is there anyone present to represent the case tonight? Mr. Bissel, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I just want to say that I appreciate the work that Donna and the planning staff have done to work through these issues. I think we're, I think we're where we've been trying to get on this. So we worked together to resolve the outstanding issues from the last meeting, and we had submitted our thoughts on it, and staff recommendation came back, and we were in agreement with these two amendments that the staff has requested, or these two modifications that are in your packet, but we'd like to further clarify it. So that where it says, and the first one, prior to the initiation of the use on the first subdivision lot, or staff recommends language to be replaced with, at the time of issuance of the building permit authorizing construction to begin, and we think that that should say on each subdivision lot as well, so that there's no question on when those fees get paid. So in other words, the first subdivision lot is paying the fees for that lot, but not for all the lots. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Are y'all okay with that?
And then the same thing, as far as the utilities and interconnecting drive aisles providing a cross-access to abutting properties shall be provided to the property line prior to the initiation of the use on each subdivision lot. Again, the same kind of clarification.
Okay.
So it's on a lot-by-lot basis.
All right.
And those changes, we are in agreement, and I would like to answer any questions.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Bissel?
Yeah, I just want to make sure on the points that you just brought up, the wording again, where it needs to go on the motion. Because you were pretty specific as to, and I just want to make sure when the motion's made, that we've, or whomever makes it's gonna cover the language that-
If you look at the page, or the paragraph labeled "Staff Recommendation."
Right.
The first bullet point there, it would be at the very end of that statement, at the time of issuance of the building permit authorizing construction to begin on each subdivision lot.
Just at the end of that, where it says "begin" on each subdivision lot. You want that to be the final. Okay.
And then on the second bullet point, utilities and interconnecting drive aisles providing a cross-access to abutting properties shall be extended to the property line, and then right there, prior to the initiation of the use on each subdivision lot.
After property line?
Yes.
Prior to?
Initiation of the use.
I think she has some of it already incorporated in this sheet, Mr. Bass, but maybe not all of it.
I can give you my redline copy. Here's what the-
I think I've got it. I think I've got it. Let's see. I just want to make sure it's- And Donna, planning doesn't have a, staff doesn't have an issue with those changes? Thank you.
We're okay with the proposed changes.
Okay.
Could we say something like incorporate the changes, Mr. Bissel? I'm stuttering this afternoon. Mr. Bissel's mentioned tonight, and feel confident you've got it?
Yes.
Okay.
So just a general statement?
Yeah. She knows what you're talking about, I think. Are you okay with that? Okay. All right.
We've already corresponded.
I think we're good. Anybody have any more questions for Mr. Bissel? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, I will open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on this item tonight? It looks like we've got a couple people signed up. First up, Kathleen Saunders.
Yes, good evening. Sorry I jumped up too quick before you called for me. I knew I was the first one on there, though. I know y'all want to get home, so. My name is Kathleen Saunders, and I'm with Quibbland Associates, and I'm here on behalf of Tractor Supply and Baseline Development. Some of you that were here a couple of months ago know that they came in for a text amendment for some items on their site. They have the same issue on their site for subdivision. There would be a commercial subdivision, and they would like to develop into two to three lots. As it currently is written in the UDO, they are a major subdivision and have to go through a use permit process as well. So we just want to come in support of the text amendment as proposed in front of you, and that is mainly because we feel like it'll make commercial development more marketable along that corridor for Tractor Supply as well as others that come through.
All right. Anybody have any questions for?
No, we're good. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry if I mispronounced anybody's name. Ralph?
Renalter.
All right, Renalter.
Ralph Renalter. Hi, good evening. I'm Ralph Renalter with Baseline Development. We are a preferred developer for Tractor Supply stores, and Tractor Supply sent us into this market to locate, to find a location for the store. With Larry's great help, we were able to find frontage on Carrot Oak Highway, and as we got further and further into our planned development, we became aware of the major subdivision classification that we were in, although it would appear that from the start for a novice like myself, because we were buying one lot from one seller. But because the parent lot had age on it and was split, and Homestead had put in a number of homes, we were apart, inadvertently a part of a major subdivision. And this text amendment as written clears that problem for us and others like us. We've only, we're only buying 6.82 acres. We're putting in a $3 million store that's going to generate four, five, six million dollars of sales, and we can't, we couldn't do it without the ability to subdivide and to sell the remaining parcel that we will create with our subdivision. The economics don't work unless we can do so. So I appreciate Lori, Donna, Jason, everyone's help in trying to get to a point where we can make this happen, and with the passing of this subdivision, which, excuse me, with this text amendment, which we support as written, we will be able to make the store a reality and break ground in a month, month and a half.
All right, well, that would be exciting.
Thank you for the help that you all have offered.
Yes, sir.
For your approvals and recommendations thus far as well.
Yes, sir. Well, that's what we aim to try to do, but glad to see you here.
Glad I made the trip.
All right.
It's like Disney World. It's a long wait for a very short ride. But I'll run back to Southern Pines tonight. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. And... Anyone else? That's all right. Come on up. Just state your name and address for the record.
It's Sanford Cohen, address 4445 Corporation Lane, Virginia Beach, Virginia, 23462. Greetings again. I was with you all last month when we went through the text amendment for the first time. Really don't have anything to add other than to echo Mr. Bissel's thoughts and comments, and extend my appreciation to the staff. This was a little bit trickier than what we had anticipated when we first started down this path, and it was a little bit difficult for all of us to wrap our heads around, but through the staff's leadership and dedication, we were able to get it done, and I wanted to give them a shout out. They really came through in a very professional manner, and we appreciate that, and certainly appreciate your consideration of our text amendment, and we're happy to help out Tractor Supply. So we all benefit by this. Hopefully, it's a mutual benefit for not only the county, but future commerce in the county as well. So thank you again for considering our text amendment.
Yes, sir. All right, anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any questions or discussion at this time? Hearing none. I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval of PB 2019, subject to the following modifications, where the proposed language states, prior to the initiation of the use of the first subdivision lot, and prior to the initiation of use on each subdivision lot, staff recommends the language to be replaced with, at the time of issuance of the building permit authorizing construction to begin on each subdivision lot. Utilities and interconnecting drive aisles providing a cross-access to abutting properties shall be extended to the property line prior to the initial use of each subdivision lot. All construction utilities, drainage, and access easements shall be provided to abutting property lines at the time of issuance of the building permit authorizing construction to begin, because the request is consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan, policy CD4, by encouraging non-residential development to cluster along arterial roadways and provide internal vehicular connectivity. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the proposed text amendment will result in a logical and orderly development pattern, since new development would be required to submit a general plan of development addressing the installation of infrastructure improvements, as well as the maintenance responsibilities of private and common infrastructure.
All right.
Can I have a clarification on utilities? In that first sentence, does that first sentence end with property line?
Let's see.
With the utilities and interconnecting drive aisles providing an access to abutting properties shall be extended to the property line?
And that's under the-
The second bullet?
That's what was added by Mr. Bissel, the "prior to," after that. Right.
Yeah, you said prior to the, can you repeat that?
Yeah, prior to, let me make sure I've got the wording right. Prior to initiation of the use on each subdivision lot.
That's where we want to have the same language.
Okay.
I don't know if that's going to be a problem. We'd like to have the same language. Anywhere that it was listed as prior to the initiation of the use of each lot or first subdivision lot, that that be replaced with building permit, at the time of building permit. That first sentence is just a statement, that they have to be extended to a property line, and that's going to happen during construction, and we understand that. But what we also want to make sure of is that the easements are in place at building permit application, so that everyone has an ease of connection up to where you are extending it. Does that make sense? The first one's just a statement. That's going to apply. You extend it to the property line, and you're going to do that during the construction of your project.
You said prior to construction, you want the easement to be-
Correct. With the building permit application, that all of the easements are in place that will guarantee a connection, in the event that someone were to come in while you are constructing, that they could tie into your property. They hopefully would, yes.
Okay, how would you like to word that?
Should we take out prior to the initiation of the use on each subdivision lot, which is at the beginning, I think that was at the beginning of your second sentence in that second bullet, and just end with on each subdivision lot? Is that acceptable?
Yeah, I think that's acceptable.
Okay, so I'm going to add a caveat to my motion, that with my motion, we're going to also recommend approval of PB 2019, considering staff recommendations. Staff recommends approval of the proposed text amendment with the following modifications, where the proposed language states, prior to the initiation of the use on the first subdivision lot, and prior to initiation of the use on each subdivision lot, staff recommends the language be replaced with, at the time of issuance of the building permit authorizing construction to begin. Utilities and interconnecting drive aisles providing a cross-access to abutting properties shall be extended to the property line. All construction, utility, drainage, and access easements shall be provided to abutting property lines at the time of issuance of the building permit authorizing construction to begin. These are adding staff recommendations to the amendment, or excuse me, to the motion.
And I think the applicant wanted to add in on each subdivision lot at the end of both of those bullets. Am I correct?
Okay. In addition, we will, I will make the motion on the wording that the applicant-
Thank you.
-brought forward to the planning board.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. A lot of stuff going on here.
No, we got it. We got it. That's good. All right. We have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously.
Chair Alex, can I just pass to the second one?
Mr. Dahl.
What's that now?
Who made the second?
Yeah, I seconded it. Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
I'm a rookie, so I can-
Oh, you're fine.
All right.
He's a good team player for stepping in.
Yes, absolutely. All right, next item. Make sure I get the right one. Next item is PB 2023, Miller Homes and Builders LLC. Request a conventional zoning map amendment of 1.05 acres from conditional general business to general business, 155 Survey Road, Moya. Ms. Valova?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This request is submitted by Sam Miller, on behalf of Miller Homes and Builders, the property owner. Is, as you mentioned, a conditional, a conventional zoning map amendment. Basically, what the applicant is requesting is to rezone one point zero five acres, the entire tract, from a conditional district to just a straight general business district and would allow the developer to develop the property in accordance with the uses that are allowed in the GB district. It would remove the plan and conditions that were approved by the board. And this approval was given in March of, March of twenty-eighteen to establish those conditions. And you do have in your packet, the use conditions. It's on packet page fifty-three, there's a use comparison page listed in there and the conditions, the use conditions are provided for you on the left side of that. So to give you some reference of where this property is located, it is in Moayak, it is at one fifty-five Survey Road. It's the site of the LJ Beaners Bakery, also a specialty sandwich shop. It contains an existing modular located on the north end of the property. Survey Road is a secondary road in the state system and provides access to the Lakeview subdivision, which is a planned unit development, as well as Eagle Creek, the residential development there and the golf course, Moayak Elementary School, and a few other single-family dwellings that are located along that road. It is a signalized intersection to the north and Survey Road extends down to the east and south of this property. It is just south of Moayak proper. The surrounding properties include farmland and residential uses that are located to the north. That property is zoned agricultural. The property to the west is Lakeview at Currituck, that is a residential development. It is a planned unit development. It has a base zoning district of SFM, which is a single-family mainland district with a planned unit development overlay over top of that. There are terms and conditions, as well as a master plan and, for that property. To the south is Eagle Creek, that is a residential development and golf course community, as I mentioned. That is also zoned agricultural. There, to the east is cultivated farmland, it's zoned GB. There was a community meeting that was held for this project on November the eleventh. It was held at the property, including staff and the applicant, there were six people present at that meeting. And the concerns really were over, nothing really specific to this use, they were just concerned of how it may impact their property and what changes may occur on their property. The two thousand and six land use plan classifies this property as full service. You can see the divisional survey road, where the full service enrolled district divides it. The full service district in the, in the Moayak sub-area really references the preservation of the existing community character as being a very important aspect and for non-residential development. The Moayak small area plan is consistent with that two thousand and six land use plan and it too is full service. It classifies this as full service and encourages a high degree of service for this full service area and references architectural elements and creative design that maintains a human scale, meaning that it's very important that the building relate to the people. The two thousand and eighteen conditional district zoning focused primarily on the intended use that was being made at that time. And it was the conversion of an accessory building that is right here. Conversion of that accessory building was for a bakery. The bakery is since in operation, it's successful. But that zoning district was focused on that use and what could be allowed, not only currently, but possibly in the future in the event that the bakery were, were to close and it needed to move on to a different use. The single-family dwelling, which is a modular located on the north side of the property, was intended to remain on the property at that time, there was no intent to convert that over. Since then, I suppose that there's probably some indication that, that it will change as they want to do some other uses on the property, which is the need for the rezoning. So there were two options for the applicant to come forward. You could either submit a conditional zoning application, amending what they currently have, or submit a straight rezoning application or conventional zoning application, which is what the applicant chose to do. With this request and the general business district, there, the purpose statement that you find in the ordinance is it's designed to accommodate a wide variety of residential and non-residential uses for lots that are bound by major roadways. And as I mentioned to you, Survey Road is a secondary road and not necessarily a major roadway. The GB district, which includes a very large span of uses, both residential and non-residential, but it's more intended for properties that do front major arterials, because there are potential use compatibility conflicts. And those include such uses as a parking lot, possibly a bar or nightclub, a lounge, maybe even a convenience store, laundromats, pawn shops, boat, marine rental and sales and service, automobile repair and service, car washes, taxi cab services, hotels, motels, contractor service and crab shedding. Those aren't necessarily intended in areas where you have residential uses as well that may abut the property. And with a straight rezoning, you really can't address uses. You can't address those conflicts. But with conditional zoning districts, you can, because you know what the intended use is, you know the size of it, you know where it's going to be located, is adjacent to a residential structure. You can tailor that request to, to be more in line with what it's around. Doesn't mean these uses can't occur on the property, just means that they, as a general allowable use with no conditions, it may not be suited for certain properties, because general business is up and down the highway. It also includes some, some secondary roads in cases. I did want to point that out to the board. The, let me go back one. As I mentioned to you on, on your packet page fifty-three, that summary of uses is provided that shows what was covered under the conditional application with the initial two thousand and eighteen request, as well as a list of uses that are allowed in the GB district generally. And I do want to point out that since this is a request for conventional zoning district, it is not legal to impose conditions or request certain uses be excluded from the request or to even require a plan to be presented to the board. So as I mentioned, the property is located in a full service area designation in the land use plan and the small area plan. There does not appear to be any direct conflict with the request and those plans. But there are policies in the plan that address compatibility and conventional districts are not, does not provide any assurance or any, any way to prove that compatibility or address compatibility. And it doesn't allow for the applicant to be able to tailor the use in a manner, in a manner that plans are presented and conditions are mutually agreed upon between the applicant and the county that can put items in place to make that use more suited for that property. The GB district provides a wide variety of uses and there are impacts that can be indicated with some of those uses that may not be expected with every development project. And specifically, the land use plan policy CD four describes highway-oriented commercial use. And that's a highway, this is located on a secondary road. They should be clustered along secondary, along segments of highways and contain land uses that are mutually compatible and reinforces the use and design. So, that, that is a policy that we don't feel like this is consistent with in terms of potential uses. And that's really the focus here, it's not, it's not an issue necessarily with the district. It's more of use compatibility, that we don't feel like that a straight rezoning or conventional rezoning provides the assurances that the use impacts are addressed. There is also policy CD five, where it speaks about commercial encroachment within immediate adjoining existing residential areas. And we do have two major subdivisions in that area. And it speaks to some of those uses that are identified as a GB use, that it's permitted by right, and those are large-scale commercial uses. That's probably not a major concern due to the size of the property. You're not going to have a large-scale building on that, on that piece of property. But there are automobile-oriented commercial uses, such as service stations, car lots, car washes, drive-through restaurants, that are not considered uses that should be immediately adjoining an existing residential area. And there's no way with a straight rezoning application to address that. Other relevant policies that apply to this request could include land use plan policy CD one, that's the neighborhood serving commercial, we just spoke about that one with the prior, prior application. They're encouraged to locate where collector or secondary roads intersect. And they are designed with small-scale businesses that are near neighborhood-serving facilities such as schools or parks. And we do have the school located along that property. But we can't ensure that it is a neighborhood-serving commercial use. Also, small area plan policy CC two. It encourages non-residential and mixed-use development to incorporate building and design, site design to enhance the community appearance. We have no way of ensuring that that can be met with this application. And policy ST two, it, this application would support local entrepreneurs to establish a community-serving business that could diversify the local economy in close proximity to a residential area and promote community interaction. So from a staff perspective, as I mentioned, there's no major conflicts with the land use plan and the Moayak small area plan. But we do feel like by granting a straight rezoning application that we can't make certain assurances that it will be a neighborhood-serving commercial use or that it won't generate some of those other types of activities that may not be something you want to see adjacent to a residential subdivision. So we are asking that the applicant submit a conditional zoning application that could be conceptual in nature and that would provide some agreed-upon conditions. And we hope that that plan and those conditions could be tailored in such a way that it would provide the applicant with their desired degree of flexibility and still allow the county to maintain the community values and consistency with our officially adopted ordinance as in plans. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this request.
Does anyone have any questions? Not right now.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, let's see. Is there anybody here to represent the case tonight?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Miller. How are you doing tonight?
I'm doing good, how about yourself?
All right.
All right, one fifty-five Survey Road. The property does currently occupy a establishment, LJ Beaners Bakery and Cafe, that my wife owns and manages. When we put it together, we went through a rezoning process, which some of you may have been here for that as well. I do recognize some of those familiar places from then. And we went through and we followed the advice on this to do a conditional rezoning. And we did that to the conditional GB. And with that, my paperwork's somewhat different than the report that I received relative than what you guys got. But in the paperwork I have in page four, it uses some of the comparisons. I don't know if you have a sheet that looks something like this or not.
Yeah.
Okay. And if you look on the left side, to put it in layman's terms, because I prefer things to be a little simpler complex if possible, just so we can get to the point. On the left is basically what I'd agreed to with the planning board, as well as the commissioners. And the issues that the commissioners had relative to the development of this site were nightclubs, bar, automotive sales, shopping center, pawn shop, arena or stadium, wind energy, major utility, helicopter landing, halfway house or boat sales. Now, you look on the right and you see uses allowed in GB. Just so we're clear and understand it, because I noticed that, at least on my sheet, there's not a key that says that. But if it has parentheses and a U in that, that would mean that it requires a use permit, which means just because it's still allowed in GB, doesn't mean that you can do that. You still have to go through a secondary process to even do that in that arena. So if we go back to the conditional zoning conditions from two thousand and eighteen, wind energy on one point zero five acres, I don't think we're going to put a wind farm up. Major utility, probably not going to happen there either. Boat sales, I'm not really seeing it, I guess you could on one acre. But probably not real realistic, you're not going to sell very many boats or have much to show. And then that basically leaves bar, I think, if I've looked at everything right. Everything else requires a use permit. We're clearly not going to put a arena or stadium on one acre and do those sorts of things. So from a risk perspective of what the commissioners had said, those are the things they were concerned with, those are the things that said, "Sounds great. We can build a bakery, I want some flexibility so that if business changes and we need to expand or we need to do other things, you can do that." So very good, Mr. Miller, that's great. You guys are welcome to proceed, just can't do these things. So now we, we come to today, which is why I'm here today. And, you know, we've gone through some things and we added some coolers for ice cream and other things, because business has been, been good to my wife. She's been blessed with good business and, and it's grown. So she needed some more storage space for freezers and, and refrigeration. So we added that. And that was approved because that was an accessory use and that fit in with the conditions, you don't have to come back for that. And now, we're doing these things and we do payroll and my office is at another location. And we rent a place and say, you know, we have all this, we don't really use this modular. It doesn't look great across from this new subdivision or in front of the golf course or the grill down there or the school or... Maybe it'd be nice if we could take that down and put up an office there and, "Hey, when you're doing that, I could use a little more seating area in here and maybe we can do a couple other things, you know, in the bakery and expand the business a little bit." All within the scope of, you know, a bakery cafe, which is what my wife is doing. So we started talking about that with planning and... So anytime you do conditional zoning, that's what you get. It's not, you can do these other things. It's you can do these other things as long as it meets a site plan and you can't do any of these things that we agree together that you're not going to do. So it was an educational experience for me. So right now, if we want to come through and we want to put an office in there, we need to do a conditional zoning amendment or rezone the property. Now later on, five years from now, my wife says, you know, it'd be great. Maybe we could put in whatever, you know, some batting cage or putt putt golf that would go well with ice cream. Again, I got to come back and do a conditional zoning amendment for 1.05 acres that abuts nearly 50 acres of straight general business. Now that, that 50 acres touches Kurutuck Highway and that's a primary road, but also 40% of the front edge of that or perimeter of that property touches a secondary road, also by the same name of survey road. There's nothing that says, because your property is zoned that way, that says that you can only access from a primary road. You can also have accesses off a secondary road. And again, that's 49 acres that we literally touch that is currently general business and can do all the things we're talking about that are potentially an issue, could be a problem, might be an issue. We don't really think it's a compatible use. And I hear that, but at the same time, I'm kind of standing here saying, this is 1.05 acres with a business on it right now. What could we possibly do with it? It really is that disruptive in comparison to the 49 acres. If we go to the other slides, I don't know if you can scroll on a couple of these for me, Donna. That one there. Eagle Creek and Lakeview, those two subdivisions. Eagle Creek is labeled agricultural and that's when agricultural was in place, when we developed Eagle Creek, SFM or single family mainland was really in agricultural. So a lot of that may have to do with, that's why that's put together that way. So it's not like we're really trying to put general business in agriculture. It's kind of, this got developed 20 years ago and these were our standards then, and our standards are a little different now, but we never really changed the name of how things were then. Earlier, if you look at Lakeview, there's a couple parcels out in front of that, and those parcels also abut on survey road as well. Those are reserved for general business as well. So it's not like anything new or anything outstanding of what we're doing here different, even though it is a secondary road. We've got 49 acres approximately through a couple parcels that touch survey road. Also, some touch the highway. If you notice some of those as well, if you look where the road is, the RD, there's actually two parcels in there that are, that only touch survey road. They're also just GB. You see that where the small D is at the end, that parcel only touches survey road, yet it's zoned fully GB, straight GB, if you will, no conditions. If you also look where the VE is, that's also red. That's straight GB and touches survey road. And those two are within a couple baseball throws of an elementary school or middle school, excuse me. If we look at our other developments as well, you know, some of the things in development and in trends in development, you see things such as mixed use and you see things like live work atmosphere. And putting those things together, we developed a plan for Moyoc Kurutuck Station and, and those kinds of things. We have the same kind of mixes where we're mixing GB, we're mixing MXR, we're mixing those pieces. Really not different, but just on a macro scale versus a micro scale. Those were a couple of the things we saw with it. From a community perspective, because I'm interested to see, you know, what the community had to say about it. We did have six attendees. One was myself, two other staffers from Kurutuck County, and then we had Jessie Anderson, who owns the property immediately. If you go straight up the page, you have the highlighted green section. She owns approximately 10 acres through two parcels and was curious as to what we were doing and why we were doing it. She and I talk on a regular basis and actually have exchanged cell phones and otherwise since then. But long story short, was okay with it and clearly was not upset to come tonight. The other persons in attendance were Frank and Doris Flora. Doris owns the immediate GB that touches the property. And anytime we did anything, the past Doris would come to the meetings and those things and actually like some of my coffee cups at the meeting before that and asked if she could take them home. So she has a couple of my Miller Homes coffee cups. Anyway, long story short, Frank is her son. He came to support his mom. She's, she's a little older and she's just curious what we're doing. She's been very supportive of what we do as well. She gave us permission to go on her property and actually clean the ditches out around the farm and stuff like that once Frank had cleared the crops so we didn't cause any damage. But again, I don't know if anybody came tonight to speak on it, but I don't think there's anybody here even tonight who came to speak on it. So from a community perspective, we haven't seen any opposition. I'm just asking to be straight conditional GB, just like the property that we touch, just so that we can do those sorts of things. We do intend to put an office over there so we can move our bookkeeper over and remove the modular. I don't know exactly what it's going to look like. And quite honestly, if somebody else came along and said, hey, you've got some space. Do you have room for another suite? We're chiropractor or we're something like that. And it made sense for us? Yeah, we'd probably do a build to suit and lease it. But we don't have so much space and we can only do so much with it. And I'm just asking to have the same rights and privileges with this rights of this property that the property that we touch adjacent does, that all the stuff that goes down survey road does, that Lakeview is planned to do with the commercial development in front of that. Why does this 1.05 acres need to have restrictions and none of that stuff does?
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Miller? Not right now. I think we're good. But thank you. Yes, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item tonight? That didn't sign up? All right. With that, I'll close the public, well, we'll open and close the public hearing and nobody's here. And any other discussion? All right, hearing none. I'll open the floor for a motion. Mr. Miller, I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt tonight. You've been a...
Yeah. Set back a little. Yeah.
Well, anyway, he's going to, he's going to get the benefit of the doubt. He's been honest with us the first time when his business came up. It's been a good business. I don't have any complaints. It's been a good steward to the county. So I'm going to move to rec, to recommend approval of PB 2023 because the request is consistent with the land use plan policy CD one and the Moyoc small area plan policy CC two and ST two. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because the property is designated as full service in the land use plan and the Moyoc small area plan. The property is adjacent to the general business zone property. The property is approximately 1.05 acres and limits the size and scale of development. The allowable uses in the GB zoning district are consistent with the full service designation in the LUP and Moyoc small area plan and compatibility can be adequately addressed through the site plan review process and requirements of the UDO. And...
That's my motion. I'm not adding anything.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? All right. Motion passes. Yes. You missed all the good part, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. I'm sorry I got problems.
Good luck.
I appreciate it.
All right. Next item. Agenda item PB 2025 Stormwater BMP. The text will revise chapter seven, section three, four, B two to require new major subdivision stormwater infrastructure to be designed for a 12-inch rain event over a 24-hour period. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I worked on this text amendment along with Matt Kirk and Dahl. And because this is the, the nature of this one, because it does have significant impacts on development in our county, I'm the one that's going to be presenting it, but Matt did, did help me out. I asked him to be here tonight so that you all could get used to another face, another new face. I think he's been here before, but he, he helped me on this, this text amendment.
All right.
All right. Some background to this text amendment. Last year in 2020, the board, the Board of Commissioners discussed at their retreat just their concerns over drainage and stormwater, the issues that, that we're seeing. These are especially impactful in the northern part of the county where we're having such a high rate of residential development. So they were kind of brainstorming different ideas and so they directed staff to model, to research, to see how if we would up, increase our standards, our stormwater standards, how that could impact a residential subdivision. So we, they directed us to do that, even to the point of possibly doubling our current stormwater standards. Currently, for new major subdivisions and major subdivisions or any land that'd be divided into three or more lots, stormwater facilities must hold the 10-year storm event. And I evidently don't know how to spell the event. And the release rate has to match a pre-development wooded site from a two-year storm. And, and that's a, that's a lot of numbers there, but basically the 10-year storm in this area is about a six-inch rain event over a 24-hour period. So if we're getting, you know, and we've been having big storms like that, we're getting six inches of rain over a 24-hour period, the stormwater infrastructure, the BMP is the ponds. Best management practice what BMP stands for, but those are essentially the ponds. Here's what we use them for, how we say them. They have to hold the rain from this, that site, the first, the six inches of rain. And it has to release it much slower, basically over wooded lot, so an undeveloped lot over a, basically a three-inch rain event. So you got to plan for a big one and release it as a very small storm. And this is, and, and so you know where, we're not just making this stuff up. This is, we get this information from, from NOAA, the National, the Weather Service, and it's a nice little map here. Let me zoom in. Whoops. It's not showing up there because I sat, I, I was lazy and I sat down. So, there we go. Is it going to pop up? It's popping up on your screen. It's not coming up on the NOAA website. Okay.
That was blue a minute ago. Now it's not.
I know. It was, it's hyperlinked.
I opened about four of them on my computer over there.
So I don't know how to...
You could just tell us about it.
These fancy, anyway, it is, it is scientific data that we're basing all of this on, and I was going to walk you all through that, but we can't do that with my limited...
Your word for it.
Yes. So I get back to the PowerPoint. So, all right, here we go. So we went out and we tasked the Timmons Group, specifically Kim Handy from the Timmons Group, to model essentially doubling our stormwater requirements. So she modeled a 500-year storm, which is basically equivalent to a 12-inch rain over a 24-hour period. So instead of a six-inch rain, now we're going to potentially be modeling and requiring to hold a 12-inch rain. So getting bigger ponds, we're going to get bigger. This model, this modeling of this did not consider upstream or downstream condition. So it was just, this site has to handle the rain that it receives. We're not worrying about what's going on upstream and we're not worrying about what's going on downstream, our outlets. So she, she took two existing recent subdivisions, Countryside Estates and Froggy Meadows. And so, and she compared the stormwater size. She, she modeled them, did all the mathematics that if I'm not a, I'm not an engineer and I'm not a hydrologist, but all the nice math that some of the folks behind me can probably explain to you better, all the math for size in these stormwater BMPs, going from a six-inch rain to a 12-inch rain. And, and she concluded that the pond area increased, essentially the, the area, the surface area of the water increased by like two and a half times. We have such a, a high water table here, especially in the northern part of the county. We can't go too deep. So it's not like we can gain a lot of capacity going deep. We've got to go and, and take a, we've got to go wide and have a lot more surface area, which basically came out of 15% loss in lot yield. So here, on this one, this is Froggy Meadows. The blue areas are the existing ponds or generalized representation of the existing ponds. And if we're going to increase these standards, the, the, the green is what's going to be needed in addition to the blue. So you can see that these, it's going to be taking up more space in Froggy Meadows. So the other one that she, she looked at, that she modeled was Countryside Estates. Once again, the blue are the existing ponds or like a generalized outline of the existing ponds. And, and the green is the additional area. So the, the total area for these ponds are the, you know, the green and the blue, if we go from a, a six-inch rain event to a 12-inch rain event. These were presented, this information was presented to the Board of Commissioners in, in, in a June meeting, and I can't remember the date off the top of my head. This last year has run together with all the different meetings and, and COVID situation. But several engineers did come to that meeting and speak out against, about this, changing this one requirement and for development and residential subdivision. So then the Board of Commissioners directed staff to go out and hold a stakeholder meeting, to invite engineers, to invite developers, invite farmers and, and citizens that staff knew they were impacted by stormwater and flooding in the area. So that, you know, folks that we, that we had interactions with. So, you know, they're impacted on, you know, almost every rain or something, a big storm event, we'll get a call from them. So we invited them to, to this stakeholder meeting that was held August 25th and, of last year. So seven residents spoke, three engineers... So seven residents spoke, three engineers spoke, and one builder, builder developer spoke. No farmers spoke. I was a little disappointed with our agricultural community. And then we reported those, that input back to the Board of Commissioners in a September work session, and after that, and I'm going to go over some of the input we received here in just a minute, but we were directed by the Board of Commissioners to continue on the path to increase our stormwater standards. So we get a lot of resident input, and a lot of it came out that maybe not only, you know, bigger ponds are not the only solution, but there were concerns over that the, all the pipes and culverts should be sized properly, that there's maintenance to these, that, you know, these stormwater ponds, they need to be maintained, they need to be, get the silt pulled out of them every so often, they need to be mowed around, there are certain things, and maybe some of that information isn't being conveyed well to the homeowners' association, or the homeowners' association are not maintaining them. And this, you know, once again, this language would only be for new developments, it would not impact older developments. This would, you know, just be looking at a very slight, specific new development, though you can see a lot of the comments there that we received from the residents. And from the engineers, we heard it more specifically, that we should consider the problem holistically, not just project by project. We've already increased our stormwater regulations, you know, one time in the past few years. And the larger ponds, they think the larger ponds will lengthen the discharge time, so that means the longer time that water's going to be in the ditches. The entire watershed should be considered, perhaps a stormwater model similar to the city of Virginia Beach should be completed. Maybe there perhaps needs to be a stormwater district tax, maybe we should need to treat it like a utility. Lack of maintenance in the neighborhoods need to be addressed, and maybe the HOA, POA and residents should help with the plan and not, shouldn't just all be on the county. And from the builder developer, we heard that, you know, heavier storms, we're getting heavier storms, and the ponds are feeling faster. And so maybe the people, when these stormwater facilities are turned over to the property owners' association, maybe they don't understand the responsibility and the importance of maintaining these stormwater facilities. Maybe we need to help with education. The 12-inch pond will call, yeah, 12-inch, a pond modeled for a 12-inch rain would cause more discharge. And this person thought that we already had the language in place to address these things. So at the end of the day, we took all this information, all this feedback, back to the Board of Commissioners. And once again, they directed us to continue down this path to increase our stormwater requirements in our subdivision regulations. So once again, this is a very straightforward language change, but this is going to have impacts on residential development. So the text amendment that is before you tonight is UDO Section 7.3.4B2 for under our stormwater, part of the UDO, the stormwater detention requirements. It says, "Major subject, major subdivisions subject to these standards shall implement adequate stormwater practices to reduce the post-development peak discharge from a 12-inch 24-hour storm event down to the pre-development discharge rate from the 24-hour storm event with a two-year recurrence level based on pre-development conditions from a wooded site." Now Matt and I did work with County Engineer Eric Weatherly and our stormwater administrator Dylan Lloyd to get this, get this language in place. And once again, Eric opted to go with the 12-inch rainstorm language in the 24-hour period, because that was specifically what we were directed to do, and moving away from that, the, instead of the 10-year storm or using language for the 500-year storm, Eric opted to go use the very specific 12-inch storm. That's not quite a 500-year storm, probably, we were joking, probably a 450-year storm, a 12-inch rain in the Moayoc area. And I wish I could get that chart to come up. I had it hyperlinked, and that's what I get for not running through my presentation up here prior to this. So once again, a very straightforward language change, but it's going to have implications. So we do, staff does recommend approval of this language. It is consistent with our land use plan vision statement that we will strive to maintain and enhance the quality of life within our communities for the present and future generations by providing sound transportation, planning, and water, wastewater, and stormwater services for a growing population. It is consistent with Water Quality Policy 3. Currituck County supports policy plans and actions to help protect water quality from the county's estuary system by preventing soil erosion and sedimentation, by controlling the quantity and quality of stormwater runoff entering the estuary. Policy, Water Quality Number 4, runoff and drainage from development, forestry, and agricultural activities shall be of a quality and quantity as near to natural conditions as possible. Post-development runoff shall not exceed pre-development volumes. And it is reasonable and in the public interest because it is consistent with the vision statement and policies within the land use plan, it provides enhancement to our stormwater regulations, and in new major subdivisions, it will help manage stormwater generated at that site. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions I can from the board.
Anybody have any questions? So, are you saying just somehow it has to handle the water from a 12-inch rain in 24-hour period? You're not telling them exactly how they have to do that, just you're going to have to present something to you that shows that they're able to handle that 12-inch rain in a 24-hour period?
Yes, and they have models that they run. Like I said, I'm sure at least, the two of the gentlemen behind me can speak to exactly how they model these, these events, and how big their ponds have to be to handle this amount of rain. So that's, they would, they would model it, present it in their, you know, in the subdivision plan that they present to us. Our staff would look over it and make sure to ensure that it's, you know, it's meeting our standards. But it would be, once, you know, it's up to the private, you know, the engineering consultants to implement this and to model it and to design appropriately.
Because I will agree with the statement that somebody made, I don't know who it was, that you had up there that says sometimes it may be other things, culvert pipe size, ditches clogged up. I know DOT is not very good at cleaning out their ditches, so if it's something they're responsible for, good luck. That's just why I was asking. It's not something specific to say the pond has to be bigger. If they present something that's acceptable, it's...
Well, I mean, this language pretty much says that they're, and it doesn't have to be a pond, but that is typical of what we see here, type of development. And it's good, they have to handle it. Once again, this is looking at a very site-specific language, that their site has to handle the 12-inch rain. You don't have to have a pond, but that is typically what we see, and it's, that's how we design stormwater facilities here.
It's definitely raining more than it used to, something, something.
Yes.
More at once.
More at once, and not time, it feels like it's not, you know, they're closer together. Their storm events, their heavy storm events are more frequent, I should say.
Anybody else have any questions? Well, open the public hearing if there's anybody here that wishes to speak on this. Let me see it. I don't, who have I got signed up here? David?
It's probably David Clebitts.
Clebitts.
But I'm David Deal. I walked in too late to sign up.
Yeah, you're fine. If you could state your name and address for her for the record.
Sure. Andy Deal. It's Andy Deal, 318 Griggs Acres Drive, Point Harbor.
Thank you.
This is the third meeting that we have for, meeting, I'd say, or public event that we've showed up at to speak about this, and it's because I see this and I see the county potentially making a mistake. There was a study done, and that, we were there when it was presented, and it was a thorough study that studied what happens on a development site if we install these new rules. It said, in the presentation, it doesn't pay any attention to what's going upstream or going on upstream or downstream. But the reason that we want to change the rules is to address what's going on upstream and downstream. So we didn't even study how this proposed rule will actually impact the problem that we've defined. We just studied how it impacts the developer on the site. And it may seem intuitive that, well, we're holding six inches now, and if we hold 12 inches, that'll be better because it's more, but that's not the way our systems work. We actually have very, very complex stormwater drainage systems in this county, particularly in the north half of the mainland here. We've got generally flat ditches that interconnect, that's, you know, historical farm ditches that connect to creeks that have water levels that rise and fall with the wind and with the tide and with the rain. And we have scenarios where ditches may be flowing one direction during part of a storm, may actually flow the other direction during another part of the storm, because the way all this interconnects and the way it all interacts. It's not a simple thing to look at a ditch and define what it's going to do, to look at our drainage system and define what it's going to do. We're not in the mountains where it's obvious that rainfall is here, goes in smaller ditches, they combine into bigger ditches, they combine into bigger ditches, eventually to the rivers. We are different here. And so, and we're also just barely above the groundwater, as we all know. Let me consult my notes, because I wrote down a bunch of stuff. We really do, if we want to really address this problem, instead of just putting out there rules that sound good because it's more and more is better than less, then we really do need to treat stormwater as a utility. We need to actually define our stormwater system up here in the north end of the county and understand what it is. I actually did that with a small part of the area with the Moayoc Drainage District. The Moayoc Drainage District was created after the county had hired me, when I was a Quabon and Associates, to do a model of that area. And I want to just speak really quickly about the term model, because we were talking about model, that models were created for the analysis of the individual developed sites and whether the ponds, how much bigger the ponds would be, how much, how many lots they would lose. That is something that is straightforward math. When we are modeling a system like these, then what we're actually doing is creating a program, for lack of a better term, where we're working within EPA Swim typically, or one of the spinoffs of that modeling software, where it actually addresses how different impulses, different frictions, different resistances happen during a storm, that, you know, the water rises over here, well, that creates more resistance, water's going to build up over here, it may flow this way or that way. It's actually a very complex thing that matches up with our very complex system here. We really, if we really want to address this problem, it's what we found with the Moayoc Drainage District, and, you know, it's far from solved. It's the, you know, there will be continuing problems up there until there is a huge infrastructure push, and even then, the fact of the matter is Shingle Landing Creek backs up and resists the water. But what we did find was that with the four outfalls coming out of the subdivision back behind the food line, that adding one culvert in one location would lower the water level by about eight inches. And it was not really what you would have thought, looking at the things on the ground, because there were four outfalls. It's, we could have added the same pipe to another outfall, it wouldn't have made a difference. And it's just a testament to how this is a complex system. So the proposed rule is, in my mind, just, is superfluous. The rules as they are today, I want to go back over that really quickly. It's the, the county commissioned a study a number of years ago, it was probably 12, 15 years ago, that they base these rules on. And they actually looked at carrying capacity of our existing ditches, and they determined that our normal farm ditches, a lot of the ditches that they found here, have a normal capacity to address pretty much the two-year storm. And the decision was made to not flood those ditches in the 10-year event. And so what we do is we hold back, we design typically ponds because of the elevation of our groundwater, and we drain in a new development, the 10-year storm into those ponds. And we design weirs and outlets so that the discharge into our ditches leaving the site does not exceed at any point the two-year flow from that site before it was ever developed, before it was even farmed. It's, so what that means is we hold a bunch of water, and it typically takes five to seven days to drain those ponds back down to the pre-storm level in a normal 10-year event. In other jurisdictions, when I'm doing wet ponds, it typically takes three to five days to draw down a pond. Now, this is actually linear math, or somewhat linear. If we double the amount of storage in these ponds, the amount of water that we store in these ponds to 12 inches as opposed to six inches, using the round numbers, then we're going to more or less double the amount of time that these ponds are, have elevated water. Going back to the whole two-year thing and where that came from, that came from an analysis of our existing ditches, that they generally can handle the two-year storm. So that means the water level in those, in those ditches, where it now stays elevated for five, six, seven days after a storm, now it's going to stay elevated for 10, 12, 14 days after a storm. What that means is we've doubled the risk that a small storm event after a big storm event 10 days later will flood everybody, because the ditches are going to be still full of water from our ponds that haven't gotten rid of all the water that the 12-inch storm created. So it's, without studying the systems, without understanding, well, here we actually have a ditch that can handle more, it's, we're just, you know, throwing darts at the wall, and maybe we'll hit, get close to a bullseye, maybe we're just going to put holes in the As an engineer, when I consider the proposed rule, I'm concerned about risk, and I'm concerned about, does this accomplish our goal? If we're looking at resources, and yes, it's the developer's resources, his land, his money, but looking just at resources as a fungible entity, as something, you, our total resources, it is wasteful to spend the money and the resources on a pond that can handle 12 inches when adding one culvert under a road downstream will have maybe a bigger impact. It's, it just, it doesn't make sense. I wanted to go, just go really quickly to the staff report that I printed out, and the text amendment review standards, and item number seven. Item number seven says that you should find that the text amendment would not result in significantly adverse impacts on the natural environment, including but not limited to water, air, noise, stormwater management, wildlife, vegetation, wetlands, and the natural functioning of the environment. I've been working in Currituck County for 20 years, and I've actually specialized in stormwater. As an engineer, I could not make that statement, absolutely not. And I have a lot of knowledge about our system, but without the specific knowledge of doing the work to understand the math, the capacities, this system in detail, I can't say that I know that this would not have significant adverse impacts on our existing stormwater management system. So I really feel like we have an infrastructure and utility problem in this county that we don't want to pay for, like we would water or sewer, because we can at least say we're now... we can at least say we're now storing 12 inches when we did store six. That's all that I have.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
So your basic statement is one size doesn't fit all, that each area needs to be looked at specifically, that there's levels, the soil, all come into play, that this change of going to a pond area increases it by 2.5 times is not necessarily going to alleviate the drainage problem that we're seeing?
We don't know. It's, we, I'm talking as a county, we don't know. It's, we, that may be the answer in some places. It may be the wrong answer in other places.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, there's a certain, the county has a statement that they want to deal with more rainfall. That seems to be what's occurring now. Their answer to that is simply to double 2.5 times the pond area in major subdivisions. That's their fix.
That's the fix that's being presented here, and it's more properly, it's storing 12 inches of rainfall, the 12-inch rainfall event and releasing it a two-year rainfall.
And your statement as an engineer that's familiar with the issue here is that that's not necessarily going to solve the problems that have been identified with the additional water.
Not just that it's not necessarily going to solve the problems, it may make it worse. I'm not here on behalf of any client, I'm not billing this time. I'm here as a Currituck County resident, as an engineer that works here, and an engineer who's worked for the county quite a bit on drainage issues.
Anybody else?
You mentioned about building, like, culverts and such. How do, who does that? Who takes care of all of that?
That's why I'm saying Currituck County should be treating stormwater as a utility. It's, it's, either we have to just say tough luck, it floods, or we have to say, we have this shared infrastructure, even though it wasn't built by the county, it's historic. We have this shared infrastructure. And if we either tell people, like I said, tough, it is what it is, or we as a county need to say, this is infrastructure that needs our attention. And step one with that is defining the infrastructure. And part of that will help us help answer what rules are going to give us maximum benefit. It's like with a water system. The county has their water system, they know everything about it, they know their capacities, and the engineer designs his part of it, and it has to be, it has to work with what the county has. What I'm saying is, the county doesn't know what they have with stormwater. And it's, you know, in a lot of places, you can get, kind of get by with that, but we are a sensitive place. We're flat, we're low, we have porous soils in much of the county, we have, you know, a rising water table, or a rising water level in the sound anecdotally. It's, that's affected by wind, rain, sea level rise, potentially. It's the contours of Oregon inlet, I mean, you know, but we have a lot of things affecting us, which makes us a more sensitive system. I'm not saying that we can analyze that and that part of it, but we can, we can at least learn about what we are, where we are and what we have. It's, I know the county is opposed to tax districts, I know the county, you know, we've had these discussions with the Moyac Drainage District, it, you know, it, but if we're going to continue to mess with the status quo, the responsible thing to do is to understand what is going to actually work versus what's just, hey, twice as better.
What kind of timeframe would you think this would occur, what you're talking about? Because it's the government working.
Well, I, you know, there are certainly consultants that can do this kind of work. I would imagine it would be a couple of years' study. Virginia Beach and the City of Chesapeake have done this work. I think both of them did it with some in-house work and some out-of-house work. But, you know, the city of Virginia Beach and the city of Chesapeake have much of their landmass that's part of our larger system here. So they have very similar problems in southern Virginia Beach and southeastern Chesapeake.
Anybody else?
It seems that you're saying that the site, a single-site specific remedy for the 12-inch rain is not going to solve the overall problem.
Well, it, what's our reason for wanting to do this? Our reason, as was stated, had to do with the flooding that occurs in the areas outside of the development. You, so we are already releasing less water from the site than was, than came off of the site before the construction happened. So we are already reducing the load on the infrastructure. Now, when we're talking about doubling that, we're reducing the load further, but we are elongating our, our time that we're at risk with our infrastructure.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. All right. Now we have David Clevitz.
Thank you, members of the board, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My name is Dave Clevitz. I'm an engineer with Vissel Professional Group. Like Mr. Deal, I have attended the last two meetings that this topic was discussed. Like Mr. Deal, I am here tonight not for a developer, I'm not representing anybody. I'm here to talk to you guys, educate you guys about what I think is a mistake that the county is potentially enter into by adopting this text amendment. I venture to say that between myself, Ms. Saunders, and Mr. Deal, we probably do the bulk of all of the stormwater engineering in the private development community under the current ordinance. I tell you that because we understand it very well. We're the ones that are putting together these models that we're talking about. They're very intricate, they're very complex. We're meeting, you know, the county's rules, we understand all that stuff. I echo everything that Mr. Deal had to say, so I'm not going to stand up here and restate everything that he said, but I agree with everything that he said. He elaborated on everything that we've talked about at the initial commissioners' meeting, he elaborated everything that we talked about at the community meeting that was held. One additional piece of information that I'd like to share was that at the community, at the community meeting that we had, after the meeting, and actually during the meeting, there were several people there that spoke that said, coming into the meeting, they thought that this text amendment was a good idea. But after listening to what Mr. Deal and I had to say at the meeting, they had a change of heart. They looked at it differently, they understood it differently, because it's not that simple. You can't just double something and make the problem go away. It just doesn't work that way. So that was encouraging to hear, that, you know, people understood. And, you know, Andy talked about the issues with this proposal. Again, the biggest issue, I'm not even going to talk about the impact on developers, the biggest issue is extending the duration of time that water is going to be standing or flowing full in the ditches downstream of the development. That's all that's doing here. So instead of five days full flowing to drain the pond, it's going to stay full 10 days, 12 days, who knows? Likelihood of another storm coming along during that time is probably pretty high these days. So now you've got a full ditch, where's the water going to go? It's going to fill back up our pond again, great, it's just going to take longer for it to go away. That is the bigger issue. You know, you could look at it as a health concern. You know, we don't want, nobody wants water in the ditches, it's just something that we have to live with here, of course, but, you know, the sooner that we can get the water away and out into the tributaries and the sound, the better that it is. So obviously, I'm opposed to the text amendment. I don't think that it's the solution. The solution that I think is correct, again, is what Mr. Deal said, is approaching stormwater as a utility, like all the other cities are doing. They've come to learn this over the years and have had to do this themselves, is you look at Moyac, for instance, as a whole. You, instead of Andy and I and Ms. Saunders doing one little model for this development, and one little model for this development, and one little model for this development, and we're like, kind of piecemealing things together, you step up, you model all of Moyac, and you figure out what's going on in Moyac. After you've done that, you can establish, you know, what improvements need to be done where, besides the development, you know, what culverts need to be replaced, what ditches need to be cleaned out. You can implement a maintenance program to keep that stuff open and flowing. You know, we can design ponds to hold 400 inches of rain, but if the outlet ditch doesn't flow because nobody's maintaining it, it doesn't do anybody any good. Now you've got a pond that's just full of water all the time. And that happens a lot. I mean, we see it. You know, poorly made culverts by DOT, poorly made ditches crossing through farms. I understand that there's a lot of issues with getting private property rights to do this stuff, but I think if the county was to get behind it, they can actually make that happen. You know, we try with our developers to do it. Oftentimes, we're able to get ditches cleaned. A lot of the times, we're not, because people just don't want to see the development, so they just say no. But I think if the county came forward with a comprehensive plan, we did a study, this is what needs to be done, you work with us to keep these ditches open and accessed, we replace these pipes, and then, once that overall model is done, and everyone has a good hold on what's actually happening in Moyac, when developer A comes in, he just plugs his development into that model. It's already done. Developer B comes in, he just plugs his development into the model, and you can immediately see what's going to happen. You know, it's, it's a lot of work, and it does take, it would take, you know, probably years to do, but I can only suggest that the county be proactive and start doing it now, instead of having to wait like Virginia Beach and Chesapeake, who have just adopted their plans in the last maybe 10 years, because the population and density has just exploded and they couldn't handle it. So this is where they were forced to go. So, anyway, I don't have any other comments. I mean, obviously, I don't think this is a good thing to do. If you guys have any additional questions that I might be able to answer, I'm happy to do so. But that's my two cents, for the third time.
Anybody have any questions?
No questions.
I think we're good. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Ms. Saunders, come on up.
I didn't technically sign up. I'll just say that from my experience previously, I guess, six or seven years ago now, I used to work for the City of Newport News, because I kind of wanted to address your question a little bit. They've done a great job of telling you about the engineering side of things, but as far as a public entity side of things, I could tell you about how we used to handle it when I worked. I was with the stormwater division with the City of Newport News. And so they had a stormwater fee that was associated with your property. If you were a commercial property, the rate would be based on your impervious coverage that you had on site. And then residential subdivisions had their own HOAs where they would be required to maintain BMPs that were, new BMPs that were put in. But if you had something like-
What are BMPs?
Oh, sorry, stormwater ponds. Yeah, stormwater control measures in order to maintain the stormwater on site, which could be a pond or dry infiltration basin or something like that. But having that stormwater fee and being able to go in and clean out your downstream ditches would be probably a game changer for a lot of the area around here. And I would second everything that they said. While I was at the City of Newport News, we also did drainage analysis for each watershed, and maybe you would just take one watershed, you know, the first to go around, maybe just take the Moyac area, since you've already started there, and you would pick out your key projects from that study of where you needed to fix within the system. Whatever engineer, or if the county engineer was to do that study and that model, they could tell you where to kind of start, they would have the most bang for your buck for that area. So I, I agree with both of the other people that have spoken, that I think that there would be a better approach to evaluate the system as a whole, instead of just putting it on the new development, because you already have an issue, and putting something on the new development isn't going to fix the issue that you already have at hand. That is all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you. I know what they're saying, because I know from my neighborhood, just in general, a couple of different subdivisions, and I live near the outfall of where everything goes, and my entire area, farms, subdivisions, everything goes to one outfall on one guy's property who will not let anybody go on his property to clean the giant ditch out. And it floods into the road, it floods into everybody's property, everybody downstream from the subdivisions floods because of the one outfall doesn't ever get cleaned out. DOT doesn't clean their ditches out. I think anybody that's got any of that going on in their neighborhood can clearly testify to that. So I don't know, this is a tough one. But I know flooding needs to be addressed. Maybe this is not the answer, I'm not sure. But I know from my experience in my neighborhood, you could put ponds four times the size in the subdivision that's upstream from me, and unless you clean the outfall out on the one guy's property, nothing's going to change. It's just going to keep on flooding. He won't let anybody on his property, and it's not going to change. That's all I can say for that experience. I regret that Juanita's not here for this meeting, because she's very a big proponent for-
Drainage.
Drainage, and I don't know if you would like to maybe table it until she's here. That's up to y'all. Is there any other discussion amongst the board? Was there anyone else here that wanted to speak on this tonight? All right, well, we're going to close the public hearing. Any other questions, discussion at this time? I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion for denial. I move to recommend denial of PB 20, I'm sorry, let me get to the right one. Hold on just a second. Hold on just a second. Yeah, yeah, it's in here somewhere, let me, here's one, pass me, there you go. Thank you, thank you. All right, two of them coming at me, all right. I'm going to make a motion for denial, I move to deny PB 2025, because the request is not consistent with the land use plan, because, and it will not solve, and I'm going to add this in there, given the expert testimony that we heard tonight, we do not feel that it will solve the problems that have been addressed, and the request is not reasonable and not in the public best interest. Again, because I do not believe, given the expert testimony we've heard this evening, that it will solve the problems that are being addressed.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Say it again. Who's the second?
Me.
Thank you.
And Brian made the motion. All right, we don't have any more items tonight, so anyone have any announcements they'd like to make?
The Board of Commissioners Retreat, uh, is going to be the, let me get my dates February, uh, nope, this, last year, I'm sorry. Uh, February 4th, 5th, and 6th will have, uh, an agenda, um, available soon. I do think that, um, some of these other alternatives for stormwater and drainage, I think there's going to be some discussions on those at that retreat. And, um, the next Board of Commissioners meeting is going to be held on the 19th, and that's at, at 2 o'clock, it's going to be held at 2 o'clock, so, um, if any of you are planning to attend, I'm just letting you know that, um, January 19th at, at 2:00 PM.
2:00 PM.
We're trying out, um, uh, the Board of Commissioners are trying out a, a daytime meeting to see, um, to see how well, well it works.
So you guys aren't here till midnight sometimes?
We aren't here until midnight, you're correct.
That could be a good thing.
It might be a good thing.
I had one, was, did you have anything else? I just wanted to mention, it was brought to my attention that, uh, one of our previous board members, Jane Overstreet, passed away over the holidays and just wanted to pass along her condol, her condolences to her family. Acknowledged that she was, she was always, uh, always interested in whatever was going in the four-wheel-drive area. So, sorry to hear about that. Another thing I just wanted to mention, I don't know if this is the proper place to do it, but the, the dump in Grandy, does anybody get to go to that dump? It kind of floods, and the parking lot's a little rough, and I don't know what, I've heard it mentioned before, uh, didn't know if there's anything, eventually we could maybe start in the process of having the county take a look at that driveway and parking lot there.
I know that, um, the county engineer is going to be looking at, uh, I know Shawboro, specifically the Shawboro Convenience Site, and I think Grandy's next on the list, I think Grandy's next on the list.
Okay.
Um, don't hold me to that, I've been in several conversations with the county engineer over several different projects, but, um, and I know the county will be looking at, um, some of more, more, uh, often-used convenience centers, specifically one in Shawboro, and I think Grandy, um, it's on that list, if it's not next, it's, it's up there.
Cool. It gets a lot of traffic, it gets very well-used, and, uh, it just gets in rough shape sometimes. They do their best, but it needs, it needs some love.
Uh, they're going to be looking at, uh, paving those sites, um, prioritize the worst ones first, um, so, but that's the plan over the next, um-
Heavy rains, like what we were talking about, it floods and washes trash off into the woods and stuff, so.
And you're going to have drainage issues.
We have drainage issues.
That's a given. Anything else? Anybody else have any announcements? All right. Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Meeting is adjourned.